We're good? All right. All right, so welcome to our December work session. Today is Thursday, December 2nd, 21. It is 5:30 PM and we are in Essential Building, second floor conference room. So tonight is just a workshop. We have a number of two items to discuss. Item number one, the summary of the recent FFA trip report that is going to get postponed to either our December 16 meeting or well, hopefully that one because our January meeting would be during the meeting. Yes, I'd rather. So hopefully they can come back on the 16th. So we can pass that one off and then we'll move on to number two, which is levy information. So I'll turn it over to Eric and Elizabeth.
Yeah, thank you, yes, Elizabeth. And I will be teaming this conversation. So you also have a copy of the presentation in front of you. I'll also put it on the screen for everyone involved. So really, the purpose of talking through this this evening is to have some have some more detailed discussion about the parts of what makes up our post-letting increase that will determine the finalization of later this month. And the finance committee, Scott and Grant and Katie have looked at this in a lot of depth over the last several months of school board, which led to the preliminary levy in September. And so what we thought was would be beneficial for both us as a board but also for our community is to spend some time in this work session presenting to all the board, really the parts that make up the increase and what we have options to. We always have options to levy the full amount or not. And for the board to consider, here are the things that would just not happen, was not to levy the full amount. For all of you as a full board to ask questions or to give your input, so that the intent would be the next Thursday at the finance committee. Our finance committee members take the input that all board members who provide insights this session, consider what we want to, what we were thinking about, what's the best action for the district and bring it back at the 16 meeting, the rest through the taxation meeting, to then approve the final levy. So we felt that because the increase is higher than it has been in recent years, it was important to break it apart by what parts made it up. If all board members have to give their input before we got into that final evening happening. So that's really the process there. I don't want to discount the work the finance committee's already done on this, but I also know that we want to fully understand it together as a board for the round right now. So that's where we'll start. So are we going to share the slides or how do we want to do this?
I can sure try to share first if that works.
Is it across or down?
Me.
Across? Okay, very good. So first thing I want to talk about, early effects of property taxes. What are the things that that would cause a change in the levy? And what are some of those things that impact the tax? That would be the market values of your properties as those increase or decrease that impacts your proposed tax, the class rates, residential, commercial, those sorts of things. Are changes in enrollment, residential, population, what happens there? And the one part that's kind of hard to explain, Elizabeth, you can speak to this a little bit more, is state contribution changes each year, which then impacts our levy. So the state has a formula that they apply, which if you can understand it, then you could have Elizabeth's job, as I can, figure that out, that every year they apply, it says, here's what the state contribution will be, here's what the district's expected to levy for. So it's a, the best analogy that I can use, I know it's not apples to apples, but several of you have had students that you've had to go on that math support for, and for students attending college. And the evaluation of that tells you what you should, you can afford to say that spend this much on your child's aid, but if you can or not is irrelevant. That's what the formula has now shown. And so anything beyond that is, is what we're looking at. So this formula says you should be able to levy for this amount. But a burden that puts on your community is not really there, part of that formula. So something to think about. And then in many cases, your levy would have voter approval or some sort of demand. If anyone called, now we went back several years and wasn't part of our levy that was going to improve. When we levy laps, because our new minimum had increased, that's where that amount was taken from. But we don't have any voter approved levy on top of that current, a lot of the minimums. And so that's where we sit right now. Elizabeth, what did I miss for the highlights of that conversation?
No, I think you covered everything beautifully. I think the only other thing I would offer, and it kind of goes back to that that aid versus levy, as your property values increase, that state aid is just automatically going to decrease and the levy is going to increase. So again, I apologize, Eric, if you touched on this, but I'm just going to give an example. Say our district receives $100,000 regardless. It's a combination of aid, it's a combination of levy. We're still only going to get that $100,000. It just, the scales tip just depending upon who that comes from, just based on our property taxes and our property wealth. Does that help make sense? Like, again, Wasika Public Schools is going to get the same dollar amount, it just depends on where it's coming from.
Do we know, or is it, please determine that property values increase, you know, like our house is increasing every year. Is everybody's property value is going up across the state or how does it work?
Well, a county assessor does your property value.
But I mean, is everybody's house in Wasika value is going up?
I don't, I can't speak to each individual.
Do you know, I mean, you can all.
I don't know about each individual, the average is certainly not a lot. Yeah, that's why I believe we're seeing increases. But I can't speak to each individual.
Maybe the question for the county assessor to, there are office to answer, what's the property level? But I, my understanding is there are.
Yeah, it would not, it wouldn't show an increase here. And that not meant the case.
I think, correct me if I'm wrong, that this says, you know, seven or six percent, whatever that percentage is, is not factoring in that increase. So if all the property values go up, naturally, that number is going to be higher, if they're a percentage higher, even if from the school standpoint, we may be, I guess, this is a percentage of the budget, not a percentage of property value. Which means if property values go up, this will go up, even if your tax rate on your tax form doesn't change.
Right, right, because you're taxing on a higher value. Right.
Elizabeth was nodding.
Okay, good. Okay. Let's go to the next slide then with, or Elizabeth, what was?
Elizabeth has it.
Elizabeth, are you driving?
I'm driving now, sorry about that. I apologize for the delay there.
Go to the next slide then.
Okay, so everybody feels comfortable about all the different factors that play into all, you know, the different changes for the levy? Eric, do you want me to go or did you want to?
You speak to this one.
Okay, yep. So what we really want to do is, like Eric said, we have done a deeper dive with our finance committee, but we did want to bring it to the full board to just talk through some scenarios and give a little bit more information so the board feels comfortable making a decision on the 16th. So we're going to focus just what on the proposed pay 22 levy is. As a reminder, that's revenue for our 22, 23 school year. So when, back in September, when we set our preliminary levy and we asked for the max of, maximum, excuse me, that was at 7.01%, or you see that just, you know, shy of $344,000. As we had stated at that time, not everything was closed at that point, our audit was still going on, MDE was still running into calculations, and so that's why we asked for the maximum. As of today, and this would be the same as today, the report that was last run on October 11th for us, that number is 6.93%. So a little bit of a decrease than what we had originally seen in September. So that proposed dollar amount is $340,000. That's an increase over the pay 21 levy. And again, I just wanted to give you an overall dollar amount. So the total levy is that $5,244,402, which, and then that 340 is the increase from pay 21 to pay 22. So I'm going to pause there for a second and see if you have any questions with that. All right. So now what we're going to do is, we're going to get a little bit more in the detail of, okay, what makes up that increase? And then that's where we can really talk about what are our options. Again, the big thing that we also want to do is, what other questions do board members have so that when we bring this back to the finance committee next week, we can really dive deeper into that? Or it gives me an opportunity to reach out to specific entities to find out a little bit more information. So there's three components of our levy. The first one, the largest one, being our general fund levy. The proposed increase on the general fund, so fund one, is that $251,355. And I tried to break it up into different components of what does that increase mean? So I combined quite a few because they're, they're little bits and pieces of a couple of different things. So when we talk about operating capital, reemployment, which is really unemployment benefits, just another fancy way to say that, our safe schools and our career technical education program, that increase is the 22,443. So the combination of all of those different categories make up $22,000. Okay? The next that we've talked about in quite extensively is OPEB or other post-employment benefits. And again, this is based on our liabilities for our retirees who, within their contracts, still remain basically on our insurance plan. And part of their retirement package is, we have said up to the age of 65, we'll continue those insurance contributions after you retire. So that is increasing that $51,736. The next portion is long-term facility maintenance. This is an increase of $87,933. The main part of this, there's actually an increase of $102,000 because of an abatement project that we have planned at Central Building. The reason it doesn't reflect $102,000 is there's actually a decrease on some of the other LTFM components. So the net increase is that $87,933. So I'm going to pause on that one just for a second to make sure you guys understand that. Again, the big project that we have that we didn't have properly, and that's the main increase, is $102,000 because of an abatement project that we have at Central. Yes, for all of our LTFM and general fund is the $87,933. All right. And then last thing that we talked about, and again, this is kind of coming back to those property values. As our property values increase, the state aid will decrease, which increases our levy. So that dollar amount is the $89,243.
Elizabeth, I may ask a question. Can you explain what is the difference between you have 340, 340,000 for proposed pay and then proposed increases 251?
Right.
The difference of the 90%.
Yep, that's a great question, Adita. So right now, we're just talking about the general fund portion makes up the 251. And so I'm trying to break down what does make, makes up the 251. And then the next slide we, that we go to, we'll talk about, excuse me, community education and the debt service, which will make up the remaining $300,000.
A question. So you know, where or is it, you know, like the employee, you know, the increase that we were talking salary, is it included anywhere here or is somewhere else in the frame, the frame bucket of money that we, you know? I just want to be sure. Does it make sense?
So yeah, so I think, so 5.2 million is what our total levy is on about a $30 million budget we have in a given year. So no, there's nothing includes, included in here that's any sort of increase to any of our, on its own, to any of our staffing salaries or adjustments. That would get absorbed in other areas of our general fund with that. I think what I want to go back to though is, is go back to, next slide, right here. So if we go through these bullets, I think one thing I want the board to just think about is, so 22,000 certainly does not pay for all of our CTE programs and all of our unemployment insurance and all the operating capital. So we're not adding anything to either any of those programs for that piece. It just is, this is an increase to what the levy contributes towards them. We're also subsidizing the general fund, which you see on the budget each year, the line towards the top where you can see our programming is, is different from that. Other post-employment benefits, those insurance costs, we certainly have the opportunity to under levy that if we so choose and levy for only the actual cost, what's happening there. We then take the risk that with usage of those, of those former employees that we have to, and general fund dollars into those. And those premiums are pretty well set. We have not committed to a contract on the abatement project at Central. So that, that project is one that I think we would, we would want to make the, it would be, it would be well within our rationale why we want to do that project. And it's at Central that we have plans to do some payment there. But again, that would be an area for the board to consider, waiting on that project, which then plays into our whole other facility conversation, how long do we wait on projects that add things up to another conversation about facilities? But that's certainly an option. And I can bring that, I can bring that with Colin earlier this week, that we've actually not committed to a contract for that project just yet. So we certainly have the option to walk that back if the board so chooses.
Are they included in that project, what then needs to be done?
Yeah, you want to talk about the scope of that project, Elizabeth?
Right. So there, it's mostly in the attic of Central Building. There's a, or asbestos that needs to be abated. It's perfectly safe and fine wherever it is. It's not been disturbed, but it is something that we need to get rid of. So at some point, we're still going to have to put this project back onto our levy to continue to abate that. It's just, how long do we defer it? So as Eric said, this is something that we can move to another year, should we choose to do that? It's just at some point, it will come back on if it is a project that we will need to take care of.
And then the fourth bullet is just that is, that really speaks to that state aid shift based on county assessor of our property values. That's really a lot of, there's no increase to actually what we take, take in based on that, it's just what we're asking the levy for versus what the state aids. So it's basically, I could interpret it as decreasing state aid of $89,000, what's making up that levy increase proposal there? Thank you. Question on that.
I don't remember if I, pardon if I'm wrong, see, there's certain rules or guidelines as to what we can include in a levy or not include in a levy? So for this question of what about salary changes or increases, could that be one of the levies? Is there guidelines and what can we include and what can't we include? It's in, people are questioning, why do we have this levy? Because there are some laws and rules as to what we can have in there.
Right, right. And it has a lot to do with these operating, operating processes. So a voter approved levy, if we were to go above this minimum, we could potentially utilize some of that for instructional services, which potentially could be something like salaries or something like that. But most of the time, it would be for adding program leader services with that. So the, the challenging part for everyone to understand is really that this part of this will go to that one, because it's all part of the bigger, but not on its own. The answer, I don't know.
But I guess I just wasn't sure if there's certain rules that says, well, we can't include this levy, you can.
Right, right. And I'm trying not to get into the, to read you things, because we talked about that. One of those bullets we saw a couple work sessions ago for that, but we can send that out. Yeah. I don't know, I'm not sure how to summarize that, though, making that a longer conversation.
The answer is yes and no.
Yes. There are definitely rules to it. Yeah, yeah. Okay.
Yes. We decided not to go with the abatement project, right, for this year? How, how, what would be the impact or what would be the outcome, whatever percentage of the levy will go down or just, or would pay less?
I think, do we have to move it out?
Yes.
Well, the levy increase would be reduced by the 7.3, which means that, yeah, each individual, yeah, will see that much less on that.
But when that goes back up, when you, when you do have to put that on a levy, you have to remember that cost go up every, 7% or whatever that has.
Everything goes up.
Yeah.
This is something to consider. I mean, this, last year, we had, what, like an increase of 3%, on levy or something?
Yeah, it's the next month. It's on the next slide.
And this year, it's an increase of almost 7%. So next year, it's in the middle, and we can put this back on, it won't feel like much of a, much of an impact.
Yeah, one of the hardest parts of tall levy conversations, especially with the levy that is of our size, 5.2 million, is obviously a lot of money, but it doesn't take a whole lot of dollars to sway that person. Pitch point's a lot. So we have to, some, we also, also have to think about the dollar value of the long one percentage. So for example, another entity might have a lower percentage increase, but actually impact more dollars on someone's actual tax statement. So we have to be, we have to think about all that context and everything. So you better off have to think about it on several year span, which right now, the way that we're dealing is hardly, hardly, because we're trying to get by in our daily lives, and that's the 100% respect we have to appreciate that. Very good. The next slide talks about community education and debt service.
Can I pause just for a second on this too? One, one last thing that I wanted to share with this. We talked a little bit about it in our September workshop meeting when we were learning about the levy and the process. Some of these are tied to, it's called equalization, right? State aid equalization, and we're already talking about how much is coming from state aid and how much is coming from levy. If we choose to under levy in some of these, and it's more just information for you, so for example, if we chose to under levy in the first category, the operating capital and/or the state formula, so the, basically the second bullet or the very last one, your aid also decreases the exact same amount as well. So honestly, you're going to get a double whammy on that. You're going to decrease your levy, which is just fine, but any aid associated with that amount of the decrease also gets decreased. So you're getting hit on aid and levy portion. There is no aid portion with OPEB and there's no aid portion with the 102,000.
That's a good distinction. I appreciate that.
Did she say only the first bullet?
So the, the, the operating capital, that 22,000, so that would, there's aid tied to that, and then the last one, the 89, there's aid tied to that one. But the two in the middle does not have, so you can write something.
Okay.
Very good. And then, and that's where, do you want to speak to this, Elizabeth?
Yep, absolutely. So these are the other two components of our levy. So community education or community services. It is proposed to increase just shy of $25,000, and this is really based on actual expenditures. So what happens is, we, we say, we estimate how much we think we're going to spend in school age care and adults with disabilities. And what happens is, then it's kind of a catch-up. So we report our final dollars, like we are right now with our audit, and then the state goes back and looks and says, okay, what did you actually spend? So it's a little bit of a two-pronged, you're, you're levying on current year, but if there was anything that, maybe the program cost more, and that's the, this instance right now, the program actually costs more than what we had originally levied. So they said, they say it's part of the formula, you can levy for that additional amount that you didn't get upfront. So really, again, this is based on our actual expenditures for services provided to special pupils in both the school age care program as well as our adults with disabilities program within the Community Education Fund.
So this is, you know, like 24,000, it's for nothing adding new program or anything new, just paying the debt from previous year?
It's reflective of what we spent last year.
Correct. Yep, so it's based on, you know, current year, what we think we're going to spend, as well as any catch-up that we missed from a prior year based on actual expenditures.
Do you have like the high level summary, what actually, why we are behind in which area or, you know, what went, what worked or?
Why do we spend more than what we budgeted?
Yes.
Yeah, it's, with additional, additional needs of disabilities, whether enroll in those programs or be part of that school age care program.
Can't always plan for that until it happens.
Yeah, and you can, and, you know, school age care particularly is, there is some, if there's an impact of free produce, this lunch, on how much students can pay. So we may have higher need in one given year of students that can't pay the full amount versus other years that increases your costs somewhat.
Is that affected by less people filling out the free produce forms and the per month's going down for that?
Not necess, no, not really, because they would have had to have the form to be eligible for a lower fee in some areas, but it's really just to know how many kids are going to enroll, I don't really know how many students are going to take that. You staff, and then, it's almost, it's like, it's like a classroom. Staff, the classroom could take 30 students, but if 22 students enroll, that's eight students less revenue with the same structure. So that's some of the challenges around there too.
Those are really those things you just can't just pay.
Yeah.
So what's driving that $63,000 of debt service?
Yep, debt service. So that's, that is a majority of just where our debt payments are falling and the schedule that's been proposed because of our voter approved bonded debt.
Yeah, those are, those are scheduled debt payments that are planned to be paid over the next several years, for previous projects.
But yeah, schedule why we didn't plan for them.
This is the planning for, for this year.
Right. So again, this is all based on actual expenditures, both community education and debt service.
This is the debt from 2015 project or?
Right now, we have four, four open debt projects. Our, our bonded information from health and safety, long-term facility maintenance, the 2015 program, and then our, our capital facility bond that we had sold for roof replacement at the WIS.
This is just a portion of our payment towards that.
Correct.
That debt, right?
Correct.
I assume we're only able to levy a certain percentage of total debt.
Correct, and that's, and that's what this formula is of the state, just for, towards that debt.
But one more comment to that, just, so we are allowed, and all districts are allowed, and, and that's how the formula is made, to actually levy 105% of that debt, only because there could be delinquencies, property, you know, property payments aren't made, and they don't want school districts to be left with not being able to meet their, their bonded debt in case a property owner, commercial property is delinquent and doesn't fulfill their portion of their property taxes. But what happens as well, sorry, I'm giving you a lot of information, I don't want to make it too complicated. The state still looks at that balance. So they'll look at our fund balance. So when we report our audited fund balances in debt service, they also make sure it doesn't get too high. So say we do levy 105% and we never have a delinquency. What they do then is they make negative adjustments to make sure that our fund balance doesn't get too high. So that's also a check and balance, that districts don't continue to levy for 105% and then keep that, those funds forever and ever and ever. So there are, there are calculations in there to make sure that our fund balance stays within a reasonable amount. If for some reason it's getting too high, they will reduce our levy appropriately. Any other questions with community education or debt service?
My only question would be, is there, as we mentioned in the previous slide about state aid being tied to certain parts of this, is there any state aid that tied to one of these?
To debt service, yes.
Okay.
Because of those state aid credits fall into the debt service.
Yep.
So this is just a visual on what's that 300-plus thousand is, is made up of, all the different increases that we talked about, just in a visual form.
Yeah, and I think what, what I noted on this, when I looked at this, in this form was, you know, that, that abatement project was 26% of total, property values was the same roughly, and then OPEB was a 15% of it, which is not 988, with that too, so things to note in that format. Go to the next one then, Elizabeth? So this is the history as we talked about, and this is why I had talked about, it's really helpful sometimes to see in multi-year spans what you're looking at. And so you can see that we had the last six years, an average of 3.5, the 13% in May 18. If I remember correctly, that was tied to, was that tied, was that the year that the minimum increase that our voter approved went down, Elizabeth, or was that prior to that?
That was prior to that. Really during that year, this is where we, the district started doing the best that it could to maximize all the levy opportunities available to them. So tried to note there, OPEB, we ramped up. That was actually the first year that we had ever used OPEB. Other post-employment benefits, we had utilized the least levy for the first time, and then LTFM just in general started to ramp up on the state side.
And then last year did decrease, and that was primarily due to enrollment, correct?
That, a combination of that, and in pay 20, we had another abatement project that was over at Hartley. was over at Hartley. So that was a $100,000 project on, on the pay 20, which we did, it's a one-time project, very similar to the one we're talking about at Central. So that came off pay 21.
Got it. So that's why that was decreased from that particular year.
Correct.
Have you mentioned that the post-employment benefits? If you say you don't want to do it, then you will need to take money from the general fund. And if we do that, how much it will affect, you know, we have between, you know, we have the percentage that we should be, how much we want to take this percentage.
Right. So I, I think, Elizabeth, what, what she's asking is that 51,000 would lower our fund balance by what percent?
Lower our fund balance or lower, lower the projection of the levy, which?
If I understand the question, it would lower, she asked about the fund balance.
Because we have to pay.
Right, right, Edith?
Yeah, because if you're saying we will not add it to the levy.
So what would, what would our fund balance, is our fund balance that about 6.5 million?
Right. And I'd have, I'd have to throw that in as well, there's a couple of different moving parts, so I can get that for you, that's not a problem.
Well, if you take your time, you know, that you need to provide answer right now.
Well, I think, I think you're asking more like, because I think we're going to be in what, the 27 percentage range of the fund balance, and so I, I agree, asking kind of more, where are we going to be in our percentage, what, do we have 15 and 35?
Yeah, it would probably increase it by a percentage. And we'll get the exact number. What it does, it does put us a bit more at risk for that if you have a higher year, you sent your, but, but then you just have to come back to the year that you're, that you should decide to. But we can certainly find that out for you.
Right. Another thing I thought I would mention with this is, I know an increase is an increase, and I want to be respectful of that, but to help put it in perspective, because I think that's, that's the one thing that's a challenge with seeing the 6.93% this year. So if you compare pay 20, let's take pay 21 out of it, because that is one thing that's, like I said, causing us a challenge to wrap our heads around on, you know, what, what should we be proposing? But if you look at pay 20, so the 2.53% increase that year, pay 20, the overall levy for that year was $5,103,200. If we take pay 21 out and look at pay 22, we're proposing a $5,244,403 levy, which is an, an increase, if we're just comparing those two years, of 141, basically 200, which is a 2.8% increase from pay 20.
So if we took out last year, really, she's saying really repulsive, like I'm 3%ing what we have last year.
Right, it's hard because we have that negative in there that we're comparing against.
What, you know, the concern that I have is really my tax increase that I'm going to get, and you know, it, I, it makes sense from, you know, my tax went up last year, even our levy was fine. I mean, you know, we can put the numbers, but at the end, it's people who will pay more, and it's going up, that's me, if there's any way that we can reconsider and, you know, think, like Eric said, you know, you know, think abatement, can we push it? And I know you said, you know, the service and stuff will go up, but maybe next year, like I said, there will be something else that, you know what I mean? It's just hard for people in La Cita to see this, and that's where, you know, you have people come and they will talk and they will ask why you do that, you know, is there any way that we can make it less impactful?
I think that in the first, kind of a summary, in my own mind, when I look at this, it is the cost retro, don't do it, project is the abatement project. That's not going to cost us anything in our fund balance, it's just going to be something that they can't come and wrote on, it has to be addressed at some point. That's, that's what, everything else, we certainly have the option to do, but it would just be shifting, the, would be shifting the costs from one place to the other, which again, as a board, we certainly have the option to do. But the, the most clear cut, actually just don't do it, so it doesn't cost you money, is the abatement project. There's things, the services are still there, I don't know the way to make that money. So that was the purpose of, of this meeting, and we don't have to be done now, but just to recap, purpose of this evening was to get all these questions on the same day. Make sure we know what each other's thinking, but with that dialogue for the next week or so, we need to, via your conversation with each other, so that the finance committee has all of your insight on that's 30-year, decided you're going to recommend to the board after that.
And what are the percentage changes if we take out, like, what does that change?
I think one nice thing we can look at is this, this pipe is a really good alternative. So if we were to, if we were to remove that abatement project, that would reduce the levy increase by 26%. So you think about that, about a quarter of the 6.93, like a 5%.
So it would be 4.9.
So if I understand, we're asking the committee, they have reported that we have 5.2 million. So basically what we're doing there is to take the values, whatever the value of the property is, you're running from the least, which is.
Yeah, that's the formula there.
Of course, there's all this other stuff, I don't consider it, but in the state.
Right.
And there's a lot of moving pieces here. Grass, trade some, and stuff. I was looking, I was looking at like, one of my tax statements on this land that I have, school portion is personal, school portion is tiny, county, county, I don't know, I don't have, I don't have enough, that's, 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 farmland side, majority, county takes a number, like, of course, you pay for the library and a couple of other things, that all comes on your, on your tax statements.
I think that speaks to why, I know Edith was speaking to earlier too, where it's really about the dollar value and the impact of what we have with personal property versus, because again, the percentage increase on county, for that example, the percentage increase might be lower with the dollar value would be higher. So it's hard to, the only other thing I would add, just for overall consideration, as I give my train of thought here a little bit, is that, you know, you certainly have options, certainly. And they all have implications, and they're all part of the deal, but I think this is really a positive conversation, to think it through, what's your, what's your options to make that, so I was going to go some close with that, but I'll come back.
But in some, basically in summary, you would invite us to bring our questions and concerns to you between now and the next, next two weeks.
So finance committee means on Thursday, next Thursday, after, and so the questions, thoughts that you've had, that you'd like, or just opinions and feelings that you think the finance committee should consider, please send them to me in the next couple of days so that I can show them with the finance committee as well. We can look through that. Where I was going to speak to that, just one additional comment is, why this becomes this conversation, it does it this way, is because this is bringing up to the minimum that the, sorry, the maximum this district can levy without going to voter approval. So we certainly could ask for 5.5 million, and that would go with the whole. And so right now, this is not a voter approval problem, why it's so important for us to make sure we feel comfortable for the finance, because it's just something that we're working, and we're deciding. So, which, versus some opportunities, which is to ask the committee to tell us, and that's not where we have a question.
Also, I mean, you're recommending that we share our thoughts with you. Finance committee will meet, make a recommendation to the board, but then the board at our December 16, we can still do something.
Absolutely, yes.
So I want you guys all to know, there is another, we can talk more about this again as a group on December 16, but certainly I would appreciate the recommendation from the finance committee, as we make that decision.
And then something like this, what I'd like to try to, what I would, I'd like to try to do is after the finance committee makes the recommendation, I would probably send that out to the board over the next week, as you prepare the board package, so that you have the opportunity to receive it before the actual meeting, in case we were to decide you're setting this, without, out front of that, or they have another. But I think the purpose is so that we're all have the same information, have the opportunity to ask questions, we'll land where, what we think is most appropriate for all of us. We'll share with the committee or scout, just hope tomorrow, then we can, the purpose.
Any other questions or comments on this topic? All right, thank you. This, this is very helpful, I think that we prepared for, so coming up in a couple weeks, so, yeah.
Very good.
All right, item three then is kind of a facilities task force updates, you've had a few meetings now.
Yeah, yeah, I think we wanted to take a few moments to just get the work, update of where we are with that process. We've had the opportunity to meet with, I think, our team, roughly 15 people, whenever one, everyone comes, they, they have all come, both of our first two, which is exciting. One team member got to call in today, but he was part of the conversation, so that's fantastic. So far, we've had the opportunity to talk about what facilities do we have, what are our buildings, where do they use for, where are their enrollments, what are the capacities, we've had the opportunity to think through some programming. So today, we had some presentations from our ALC director, from our activities coordinator, our principals today presented their mid-level configuration. Someone knew part of that task force last, in December, January, presented that information to Luke and John and Beck. Right now is really a large scale of information, in terms of our task force leading themselves up to speed on what we've been kind of internally talking about for the last couple of years. And so, give share with them, the presentation that was presented to you in 2020, so they have the opportunity to review what the last task force had talked about, who we've got. A large portion of today's conversation was about that needs assessment that was done in 2009, and the needs that are existing in all of our buildings, the ones that are budgeted, the ones that are not able to be budgeted because of their size, of their, of their scope. We also talked a little bit about building limitations, such as the Hartley building, and certainly could replace a mechanical system, but the way the ceilings are, are designed, the way the walls are designed, it would be quite expensive to do it that way, because you have to, there's limitations involved how the building is, which still could be the way we need to do it. And then we also spent some time talking about things that have come up in the last two years, since the needs assessment was done. So for example, we thought we could, we didn't realize that the water piping at Hartley went here quite as fast as it has now, so the last several years, had to do some more communication strategies to make sure that the water running in that building is not being impacted by the alkanized pipes that feed that, that building. So again, you could replace, you could replace every pipe in the entire building, that would be the solution for that project. Or you can continue to make sure that we're, everyone's safe and everyone's healthy, but it takes that ongoing, not really sustainable, communication strategy, so, you know, splitting lines and things like that. So really, we've had a lot of opportunity to throw a lot of information at them for hours, and I haven't seen too many glossy eyes today, so that was good. They've asked good questions. We've set the scope of these first three meetings to be really informational. And when we come back after winter break, with the three meetings that are scheduled in January and February, will be about solutions, about what recommendations to do, whether it's, you know, nothing at all, whether it's adding into a building, whether it's modeling a building. Right now, we're not in different, we're thinking about what our options are. And so, and a couple of times in today's conversation, we minded ourselves that we're not talking about solutions right now, we're talking about what's the current reality, which is a little bit, we have to reel ourselves in as a, our own team members, we know all this, but our, but our team members do not, to bring them up to speed, from that, every part. Next meeting will be on December 15, so we'll meet again in just under two weeks. And now we're starting to put tours along with our meetings. And so our next meeting will be at the Hartley building, we'll have a tour of the building to see some of this we've been talking about, and then we'll go through the rest of our meeting, our program presentations, meeting after the, we're meeting after the winter break, we'll meet at WIS, Central, back to here at Juniors, the tour dates are going to have time of this building, so that we have a chance to see it. So progress, moving along, our next meeting, we do have our financial advisors from Ellers coming to visit with us to talk about what they're seeing throughout the state, throughout the region in terms of levies and bonds, funding structures, and talk about the options that the district has, talk about historically what we have, what our current debt load looks like with the, so that the group all understands what the district's options are, because there are several, we decide what the best fit is. And so, and interestingly enough, Jody from Ellers commented, you listen behind a meeting probably three weeks ago now, she was just so appreciative that we brought them there to this stage, because I think they provide a lot of resource information, their expertise that if this early in the process is really helping to sound that conversation about what could be the right fit, we can sound that, we can sound that way. Our goal still remains in February to have a recommendation to present to the law from the task force, which then potentially, depending on the recommendation is, could lead to that community survey, could be that next step before in May, later in the spring, before we decide whether there's anything, something, community questionable or what, so, but that's still to be determined. We have the right people at the table, they're asking very thoughtful questions, nothing's for good, I don't think, in their mind, which is really, hopefully, mine, it's representative of part of community in all different aspects, and several recommendations that all of you have sent to me, so I appreciate that as well. I think we have played a bit of our bases covered, and looking forward to the ongoing conversation. Positive. Any, any questions, that would be what I wanted to show to you tonight, I'm getting happy going.
And I mentioned that our facilities committee, you guys are taking turns and going to your meeting, going to just begin that.
Voice.
Yep, fly in the wall, that's good, that's awesome.
Yeah, and my observation has been that has an impact on the conversation.
Good. I think it's nice to have a worker there, even if literally you're just flying the wall, I think it's good to have that interest level there.
Yeah, I was trying to gauge if that, if that changes the decision, if I'm looking to see if I'm saying the right thing, to your staff, but we haven't seen, so I think we're getting good on this conversation.
Questions for the task force?
The facility committee will lead the gathering. If everyone can make it work, probably that last week, we'll break after the task, just to come together and.
Okay, then our last item here is just a reminder that our December, summer 16th, right, is the date that meeting begins at 6 o'clock, not 5:30, because it's the truth and taxation meeting, and we cannot start before 6:00. So again, you're welcome to show up at 5:30, because we enjoy having conversations before a meeting, and they won't be being public.
If I understand our typical structure correctly, there will be an open forum part of that meeting, which will follow our standard open forum procedure.
Yeah.
But then we also will do the taxation hearing.
Yep.
Another opportunity for us to speak. So there's really two opportunities should they choose, for the community and or for Ellers, choose to give us feedback on that.
Yes, and the, the response portion during the truth and taxation, there's not unlimited time, it's not, it's not, so respond to.
That's specifically for taxation?
Yes, yes. So yeah, so yeah, you can't come and talk about whatever, that's through the open forum, but during the truth and taxation, can respond to, to that. Yes. So that's all we have tonight. Oh, thank you.